We want to have a discussion with the treasurer about delinquent tax collection process which she has in place because of course the question with Ray's that a board meeting about should we move forward with the advertisement so if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, please join. Thank you for being here, Ms. Rayford, to share your thoughts and your processes moving forward with this. As you know, the conversation we had, there was a citizen that came forward at a meeting and had some concerns about the current process of advertising the delinquent tax. So if you don't mind, could you just share with the board what your process is moving forward to do delinquent tax collections would be?
Well, right now, actually, when we had that conversation going, it was like I just placed 1,200 DMV stops. That's what we rely on right now is the DMV stops. You owe personal property taxes, you cannot go and register your vehicle until they're paid and full. We also do, excuse me, debt set off. So you file your taxes. You owe the county money, create a portion of that money prior to you get your refund. We also do levies. So we will search out what employee, who your employer is, and we will submit to them that you have any tax, any kind of payment. So you make what tax bills, publish them in the paper, does not deny your revenue details. In years past, before the DMV stops, yes, that's how we got people into the office. Now they come in the office, belligerent, because we put their name in the paper and a lot of times they will, "How much do I owe?" And they walk out the door without paying you done. So.
Okay, therefore clarification, the levies, is that's part of, like you said, you can seek out their employment through their social security number and if they move, it's kind of like gives you all the options short of going to court? Is that right? So it's?
Yeah, and we do actually, we send out every year, we actually send out letters to summons them to the treasurer's office.
Okay.
And say, "Come here, let's talk about what taxes you owe, see if we can't work out some kind of payment plan," something like that, and let them know these are, you know. We actually do the levies more so with the county employees.
Okay. Do you, so I take it that your personal opinion is not to proceed with any more of the newspaper ads at this point? Okay. Would you think that if, in the future, if we see a decline in recovery, that we should maybe revisit that?
In the future, yeah, if you see a decline in recovery, we should probably revisit that. But at the moment, I don't see, it's not generating what it used to generate.
Okay. All right. The only other question.
We've only had one person that I can remember in the last thirty some years that has even come to our board and criticized that.
I would suggest, yeah, I would suggest after the paper comes to the treasurer's office for about two weeks.
Well, that's a way to keep your name out of the paper.
Yeah.
Pay your taxes.
I agree with that one.
All right. Do you, this is a cycle. I don't know that I asked you this, and I just made a note here to ask you this. What is your thoughts on going to tax collection twice per year like other counties that don't?
It's going to actually generate more work inside, not just the treasurer's office, commissioner's office, and things like that. But I have suggested to some citizens who have said, well, I think you've, you know, been with you about it twice a year. You can pay throughout the year. You don't have to wait on that tax bill. Nine times out of ten, unless rates rise, which they normally do, but it's about the same every year. Doesn't go up that much, especially real estate taxes, you know, three years, it sort of goes up at the right pace. You can pay that throughout the year. You take payments throughout the year. You can actually prepay for taxes. We have tons of prepayments right now for twenty-three taxes, and people already pay theirs, and well, we don't get out of the bill yet.
Do you think there's anything the board can help you out with? So let's pretend for a second, I'm not sure the cost, we can get the last cost at a different time, what it's actually costing per full page. And I think it's normally been four or five pages at times to see what this cost is. But some of that savings, do you think it may be worth if we're not going to advertise to use some of those to push your plan about the prepayments and stuff like that? Would it be helpful in that way moving forward like that?
We could do that. We could also, we could also, yeah, I have met where all the bills are available online. So as a taxpayer, instead of having to come into the office or phone call and say, "How much do I owe?" Because a lot of them are relying on what we mailed out to them, and we mail out delinquent tax bills probably six times a year. And we tell them, "Oh, this is good through last month, this is good through June."
So you just need your software updated to be able to do that. And I think the board has discussed this in the past and.
And it's still, you know, coincide with what Christie needs, Commissioner's office. I hope EB can get landfill bills and all those things online as well. And they can actually pay through that website.
That's a good idea, because a lot of people don't like to make their travel, don't like to stop, you know?
Most people pay their bills online. They did most of them, yeah. And a lot of people, when you pay your bills online, you go through your bank account, and you just pay it that way. And it's just a click of a button.
Right.
And just to send the payment in every month, whatever you wanted to do. And that's something I try to teach anybody that comes in there, he goes, "Just do this throughout the year."
Like a regular bill, you just pay it every month.
Said to say this aside, I've already taught my seventeen-year-old.
Okay, so what, so for now, the two-year, we don't think that, you don't recommend that that's feasible for right now anyway. And with y'all's DMV stops, the debt set offs, the levies, you feel like y'all have ways other than advertising in the newspaper? And you suggested we should probably move forward with some software updates to help the citizens with this?
Yes.
All right, y'all have anything to follow up with?
Do you know what the average collection rate is for the personal property taxes?
As in?
Does that fly?
That flies in here. Such a group.
Like, is it like ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-six, ninety-five? What's the normal recovery rate?
Our recovery rate is one of the highest in many of the surrounding counties. It's in the upper nineties.
Upper nineties.
About ninety-seven.
So knowing that, you know, you could try it a year, and then if it looked like it really went down.
Give you business a D.C. A D.C., right. See, hey, it's just, it's not working, but I know there's probably other means that I'm going to start looking into as far as how to collect as well.
Well, is that the, what was that, what was that looked at? Was it like arms or berms or something?
I just finished thirty training classes today on that. That's what we had to do for the debt set off.
Okay, all right. That is, okay, all right. Good deal. I mean, it sounds like y'all moving along over there and.
It's no problem. Let's leave. Personal property. We know you can get the money there. The problem was with real estate.
Real estate, we turn it over.
Right. And if they don't pay after a period of time, we put that property sale on. And this is why we need to make everything possible that these people know the amount that they owe.
I agree, and that's, I agree, and that's why I think if we can improve the software, they can go right on there and see every, you know, because we have a lot of people that are out of town that own real estate here. They calm down once a year, every year, and pay, and they rely on family members to pay. They haven't, you know, but every year they make that trip, whereas, and they've always, if they just have a way to see it online.
We're one of the few counties that has surrounding area that's not paying class a year. I know Dan, we didn't remember quite a few of us.
I know. I like the, it would be twice the amount of tax, how much it costs to print the tax bills and things like that. So it would be an additional cost to, to the taxpayers and to the, or to the county.
Well, some people, even if we do it that way, they would pay it always before after one time. They really don't need that stuff about.
No, they would, a lot of people.
I know a lot of people like that.
So, board members, do y'all think we have a consensus to really move forward with some information, looking at this software update to move forward?
Maybe get some costs.
Yes. Just cost analysis, not formally adopting anything, just a cost analysis for the software update. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Cos, wouldn't this software update, like she's saying, this would, this would help the treasurer, commissioner's office, and the billings?
You mentioned the billing for the landfill.
Yeah, okay.
And there might be other uses depending on what software you, you look at and what options you take in.
All right. I think we'll look at as broad as we can to see, check all of the options as quickly as we can so that, okay.
I do know that the, Ms. Tomer and the commissioner were looking at one particular software package, and the commissioner came back to me and said, you kind of, where are we? Now that, you know, Ms. Tomer left, where are we on this? I said, well, my first question was, had Ms. Rayford been looped in yet? And it's like, no, don't think so. I said, well, let's, let's loop her in, but then also we can give it a couple of weeks and wait for the new finance director to come onboard.
Well, and part of that too, if y'all may remember.
Get all the brains in the room at the same time.
Yeah, if we switched prior to the reassessment, then the commissioner revenue was going to have to go out and seek a different firm to do the reassessments, because currently the Bright system had the reassessment software in there. So possibly after the reassessment, and if we could have all these figures and stuff in front of us, by the time the reassessment's finished up and they're finished with it, maybe that'd be the time to make the switch. Y'all have anything?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so folks, the folks that are listening online understand, leading up to this meeting, we shared with you all the statute that controls this, and it's very much an optional statute. The board may have the list published. The treasurer may have the list published. Clearly, there's an explanation now that.
Not a must.
There's a list. It's not a must. It's a may, and the practice has been done to exercise. I see it, obviously, a shift away from that. However, one of the standing understandings was that the treasurer would convey the list to the board. Is that something the board wants to continue to see?
Right, because that's, that is the code, is the treasurer's office will provide it to the board if you guys request it. So we don't have.
When do y'all, when has it normally been requested technically?
I think it was a standing request that just year after year, treasurer Maya turned it over because it had been asked for previously. She just, it was just an annual practice.
So could we say that, because we haven't gotten it yet, is that correct?
No.
Okay. All right. So I guess at your convenience, if, if we, if that could be just.
I'm just asking if the board still wants to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I mean, I know y'all got a lot going on too, so just, you know. Yeah, it's always convenient, if you don't mind getting that over to them, and, you know, we'll take a look at it. So. Did y'all have anything else from Ms. Rayford? Thank you so much. All right. Now, we got a solid waste base to Ted, I mean, Ms. Cos.
Good point, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Easter, you want to point us off here?
Come on, come on.
And Mr. Hyde, if you could bring up Mr. Hope, he's joining us remotely.
How y'all doing?
All right, this is Mr. Hyde from the solid waste site, correct?
Hope.
Yes, this is the gentleman that presented to you all previously.
Was Davenport?
Okay.
MS Teams got to come back up.
Yes, sir. Hey, we're trying to bring you up on, on Teams. Are you having any, we're trying to bring you up on the virtually. Are you having any trouble in your end?
Yeah, it looks like the end. I was just going to try to send what he's back.
Let him know, let him know he's, he's on speakerphone. Yeah, you're on speakerphone, by the way, just so you know. But yeah, all right.
I just sent him one also, so maybe he could.
Yeah, do it in reverse.
Yeah, do it, do it over reverse. Okay. All right, let's see if this works. We'll call you back if it's done, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Easter, everything going all right out there?
Somewhat.
We'll talk later. On the, with the contract and everything?
Yeah, yeah, somewhat, that's good, yeah. Definitely one of the better things.
I got you. All right. I think what we're going to do is we're going to go to all voice. There he is. There we go. Camera's turned off. There he is.
Okay, I'm good.
Can you hear us, see us?
Can you hear you?
All right. Thank you for joining us, sir. Mr. Cos.
So primarily, the driver here is to peel a little bit further down the road with the solid waste site. We have the phase one document completed, and Mr. Hope reached that to you all a couple of months ago now. And so what we're looking for is a discussion or clarification on which of the phase two options you would like to, to consider. I will let you know that the chairman and I, Mr. Easter, along with former supervisor Bowen, did have some conversations with the party that's running the Ludenberg landfill. It was very clearly stated to them that this was just exploratory conversations. There were absolutely no guarantees that we would be doing any business with them. Mr. Hope, I think you had some interactions with him as well. Anything you'd like to add on that? And for, for vice, the options to consider, option one, keep the landfill operating on page forty-six. Option two, sell or lease the landfill, page forty-nine. Option three, close the county landfill and outsourced disposal of waste. So really, we're at a point of what, what questions does the board have on any of those?
All right, Mr. Hope, if I could, the, let's, if we could, jump to your thoughts to the third option. Understanding that, do we have any idea, and this is nothing, obviously, that I'll hold you to, but just a rough idea of what the cost potentially could be towards the citizens if they tried to develop that other eighty acres out there, knowing all of the runoff concerns for the streams? Do we have any idea? Because like the, we know that the next, the next sale is estimated at 2.2 million, correct? Okay. And the Tiffin station could be built for less than what it costs to open that last sale, correct? Okay. So I guess the big question here is, that other, oops, we lost him. Is he still there? Oh, okay. All right, let's see what's his. All right, so the, what's the word I'm looking for? The impacts on the stream? Wetlands, wetlands. That's, that's, because I know we didn't get a, may not have gotten a number that night, but we're talking potentially millions of dollars just to protect the wetlands. Is that correct? Okay, well, the, the other thing is, because I'm, I mean, just me personally, I'm not hearing a lot of citizens in favor of privatizing landfill. And, yeah, so what, let me ask you this. I don't know if, if in your official capacity, you feel comfortable doing this, and if I, if I'm off point, I apologize ahead of time. The, as far as cost to the citizens moving forward, what do you believe is the most effective option here? And also, I would ask, if, let's say we built a Tiffin station, even if the current sale is still open, would it be beneficial to go in and close and cap that current sale, even though it's not the capacity, and get over to the Tiffin station and start hauling it out? In other words, to go ahead and start reducing the cost of maintaining that one? Because the sooner we cap it, the sooner we start the thirty-year clock. Cause the sooner we cap it, the sooner we start the 30-year clock. There you go. All right. I'm liking, I'm liking that, liking that. The, so, but also your, your initial evaluation, I believe, not only currently is holding over 7 million for its closure. And if we were to build, if we were to build that last sale and let it run through this current sale and the last sale, that expectation of that cost would jump to over 12 million during that time. Is that correct? Okay. But if we try to do this planning, like you're saying, to go to a transfer station? And if we worked through the last sale, got the transfer station built, the money alone for the opening of the last sale would take care of all the planning and execution and the building of a transfer station, but would also put us in a position to save easily probably $4 million projected if we go through the last sale. Is that correct? How long do you think it would take to get the, um, contracts in place and stuff like that? From today to completion of a transfer station? Just a rough guess? Okay. So, so just so I can kind of wrap my head around this, cause it was two points here then. So clearly there's an opportunity for us by not opening that last sale to reduce the amount of on-hand money, possibly up to $4 million. We can actually save money by building the transfer station instead of spending the 2.2. And also any cost, and we're, over the, over the life of the new location, the cost to develop each one of those sales at 2.2 million dollars and how many sales are possible in that new location? You know where I'm talking to you? Okay. And realistically, the cost to build those every five years, 10 years, it's going to be going up. So at 12 times just 2 million, that's $24 million plus the 4 million, plus some savings at the 2.2 from opening the last sale. Is that accurate? Oh, whoop, my trip. But what you're talking about, less than a hundred dollars per savings, uh, any, anything less than a hundred is a savings. But that's ongoing cost. We're not talking about construction costs, correct? And the ongoing savings? But the most important thing here, the transfer station, the employees keep their jobs. God, I've been sitting here talking all this time. Y'all do. What do you think, man?
Yeah, it's gonna pretty much be the, obviously, we're gonna have to, it's gonna be kinda hard to get the scissors. Understand they gotta drive a million, get rid of that trash.
Right.
That'll be somewhere to put it in the calendar.
So you like this, you like this transfer station idea?
Yeah. Yeah. Obviously, it's the better bet.
Board members, what, y'all got any questions for Mr. Hope? For Mr. East? We, we can almost get out of business, Mr. Vaughn. Quit burying trash.
Mr. Trump, a couple of things.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Trump, uh, just, or if you don't know it, maybe, maybe, uh, Mr. Easter doesn't. What's the life expectancy? Do you know what will be Amelia, uh, landfill? What's the life expectancy of the Lunenburg? Do you happen to know those?
All right. And then as far as you said, the, uh, the, the transfer, do you think that with some modifications to buildings or just maybe just leveling the buildings and building brand new from the ground up, uh, that the, what I call the working area of the landfill, like when you first come in, um, the, the shop to the left, the scales, um, down below, you've got the storage shit, where the animal shelter is, could, could that area be the, uh, the site?
Wow.
All right. I hadn't thought about that. I was thinking inside the gate, not outside the gate. Um, that's good. But let me ask you another way. By putting a transfer station, I think I know the answer, but everybody needs to hear the answer. By putting a transfer station there, are we extending the operation life of the landfill? This piece, which I thought was the... What I was saying, what I was saying was that if we close the landfill, but we have a, uh, an active transfer station, that doesn't necessarily mean the landfill life is still being pushed out. We've closed the landfill. We've got a transfer station there. That's not, the clock is still running on our burn down time of the landfill. It's not being held against us.
I think what he's saying, because we're utilizing the same area, does that, does that extend the clock? Or can we shut the, do we shut the clock down when we stop dumping trash and cover it? And that starts our 30 years, even though we're running the tip at the transfer station? Yeah, all the stuff we're doing now. So, uh, does anybody have any questions for us all? This one? All right. Um, what's, what's y'all's budget? I, I mean, do we want to go ahead and move forward to this next phase? Let them start looking at the, uh, ground site work there as, as far as what we need and possibly to scale? Well, you think so, Mr. East?
Yeah, I think so. The longer you hold out, uh, the closer you get to what are we gonna do to the landfill.
Yeah. Yeah. And we don't want to, cause the permitting thing for that, uh, for the next landfill in Indiana to consider. It takes five years to get that. It, it's, this was all covered under the budget already, right?
It's, it's in the...
Okay. Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Yeah. Well, unless anybody else got anything, thank you, Mr. Hope. Uh, greatly appreciate your insight on this. And, uh, you know, one thing I would like to maybe see, if it's not out of the scope of work, a projection, the transfer station and the cost potentially per ton shipping it out compared to whatever it costs, including the ni- last sale, the, the 40-year cost potentially of building the new sales and everything. I'd like the citizens to potentially see that. I mean, we're talking almost $30 million savings over the next 50 years. Now, are we gonna spend $30 million on the transfer station the next 50 years out? I don't think so. So, I, I think it's just... Okay. Okay. All right. So, um... Big Lunenburg was spending another 400 acres or something that I think they were talking... We're on a good...
So the consensus, Mr. Chairman, is option three?
Yes.
Close, close the county landfill and outsourced disposal of waste. Uh, Mr. Hope, you got that? Option three?
This, this might be the biggest savings to the taxpayers in Kansas. Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Thank you, Mr. Hope. Thank you, Mr. East. Okay. Thank you again, sir, and you have a good evening and a wonderful weekend moving ahead. Yes, sir.
Good night.
Right. Good news is always great, right?
We love to stay.
Thank you. Good staying. All right, board members, uh, we want to have a discussion on the future animal control. Do you three mind joining? Y'all will be down with Mr. Vaughn. All right, guys. I, I think, uh, we're lucky to get, get into this, spend some, talk about this, um, for months. And I think, I believe y'all had some initial discussion back in like 2019, is that right? When the first time this came up? I think.
There's been a lot that's happened in the last four years. Sure.
Yeah.
I'm learning. I'm, I'm here to learn tonight, see what's going on and...
Yeah. Yeah. So, and, and my, my intention, I mean, we all work for the citizens. I mean, I, you know, regardless if we're elected or hired or what, what the situation is here. And part of the thing, I think, is, is part of our due diligence here for this board is to try to calm waters where they're brought. So how do we do that? And also if someone's getting beat up in the public, how do we stop that? You know, so if the citizens are asking and demanding, what is the fair and easy way to move forward that's fair to them, but also cost effective? Um, so there's been some discussion about this, uh, a little bit. And, and I know the sheriff and I, almost turning, I had, had a brief conversation a while back. And that's how the sheriff already had had some numbers, cause I believe that, uh, or, or some thoughts about some things, uh, with, uh, four, I think it was four, um, in order to take, to take over that. And one of the things was that it's, they, they said, cause it's law enforcement, you know, with the animal patrol issues and stuff. So how do we, how do we get there? How do we get there? How do we either help her or how do we get this over to the sheriff's office? Um, I believe one of the things that came up at one point was, you know, if they're sworn officers, it's easier to get search warrants and it's a little bit more, um, accepted in those situations. Also with having the deputies, it has its pluses because they're sworn officers, then, um, also, uh, they're trained in animal patrol, but it, it gives them the opportunity to be on sight. Cause we, we know what you run into sometimes. We know a lot of times these are... Yeah. Yeah. So we, we understand that it's, um...
They're great. They're that.
Yeah. And, you know, sometimes having that additional certified police officer there may get a different set of eyes on a situation when they may pick something up. And they may recognize it where it's, and, and it's no, no, no disparaging here. You know, y'all, y'all are trained in a different aspect where they're trained in that plus. So it's kind of like, what do we want to do, but also what's going to be the cost? Cause obviously we're talking four additional officers here. And I believe, uh, Sheriff, you said you could probably start with two, but need to move to from your department, but we need to get to four. Yeah. So, uh, and what is safest for all y'all moving forward? We, we all hear it. It's getting worse. I mean, you two know exactly what y'all's first sworn day started with. And there's been some...
My first sworn day was in July.
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right.
It was my second sworn day that we had.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. So, and, and of course, what y'all just, this, this past week with the recent court case. So there, there's a call to that, but we want to make sure everybody's safe, what's, what's the safest for you guys moving forward? What is best for the citizens moving forward? What is best for the citizens moving forward? And what kind of stops all the complaining and accusations and the people getting beat up on in the public, you know, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what I wanted to find out. What are the problems that bring this to the table?
Well, they, well, first of all, and I mean, we've, we've seen what's in the newspapers. And it's, it's been unfortunate, there's been some elderly's attacked, uh, the, the animal attack recent was a couple of weeks ago that was in the newspaper about cows or something, uh, Mr. Moore. Yeah, so it's kind of like, you know, it's like, the public is saying, when does it stop? Well, honestly, you can't make it stop. You can only respond to what's there. Um, if it, if the citizens recognize the cost of this, that may be something where they're a little bit more tolerable. And say, okay, well, we need to be a little bit more patient, need to be a little bit more understanding. Do we have enough staff? That is the other thing. We also got to consider moving forward, what's going to happen with the shelter? Is the shelter being expanded, it's not going to put more additional work on y'all, or this is going to have to go over the law enforcement. So, if that's the plan, we need to start making a, this capital, um, uh, the, the capital cost for this, we need to start laying this out. So, that's kind of.
He had some questions I'd like to address on, and this will answer some of your questions.
Okay.
Um, and then you'd ask like a twenty-four seven vet. We start out with the closest vet during the day. We normally end up at Amelia or somewhere like that. You make, make three trips a day to that vet. At night, you're going to start in Middle Oathia and probably end up in Charlesville, Lunch Park. That's going to take your deputy off the street. Um, they're also, when they take an animal in, there's no shelter staff twenty-four seven that I'm aware of, maybe in a huge city somewhere. They're going to take the animal in, do all the paperwork, set up a run, feed them, water them, sanitize, sterilize the crate or whatever they use, cut it all, dry it out, put it back in the vehicle, and then get back on the road. Um, you're going to have to have a shelter director, which will be your networking, coordinating rescues, your adoptions, and how your calls going to work. Ninety-five percent of our calls come through the shelter phone, about five percent through dispatch. We don't want to cut down off the shelter phone, like, you calling, hey, I'm going to grab the dog, what you got?
That's right.
And that's, dispatch doesn't need to handle that. Or, you know, hey, I saw a raccoon, it charged me. Um, the other thing would be, you would need a kennel manager, and at least one kennel technician. All right, so you have your kennel manager, which is going to supervise your volunteers, train them, make sure that they're trained properly. You can't guarantee there will always be volunteers there. Volunteers cannot handle straight holds, bite holds, isolation, medical, or cord holds. You're going to have to have vehicles for the shelter director and kennel manager, they can get these animals to the vet, I mean, you vet it. Rescue sometimes asks for, you know, a heartworm test or whatever, and we have equipped the pace for that. It's not a cost of the county, we got to get them.
No, no, that's fine.
There's a whole lot of the duty that I am not aware.
Any of y'all, I mean, any of y'all are welcome to come hang with us for a day. We'd love to have.
He's in high demand, right? Um, but yeah, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying. So, part of the shelter build too.
Because you're going to have people show up at the shelter.
Right.
With a litter of kittens or whatever, you know, and somebody's going to have to intake those. And it can't be a volunteer, and they can't be in the building by themselves. And like I said, there's a lot of things they can't do.
All right, so, and I guess moving forward, um.
When you say that, is that driven by state law?
Yes, it is.
Okay, does that drive some kind of county law?
So, it's just you and your, uh, partner, and clearly with the new shelter.
We'll need more staff.
We'll need to, from what I'm hearing from you, is to keep the county out of any legal situation, we potentially need three more employees outside of what you, you two are doing on the road.
Um, yeah, I mean, we actually could use more mail.
Right.
Because it's two to three hours in the morning, and that's the part time kennel technician. But, you know, the same thing, you're doing that, feeding and everything in the evening too.
Okay.
And there's laundry to do throughout the day. And like I said, anything this animal touches has to be sterilized before you, another animal can touch it, and that's state law.
Okay, so let me, and, and I'm not being suggestive by this, I'm just using simple numbers here. So, let's say you and your partner and one other, let's say it's just working the shelter. All right, so if it's just you three working the shelter and law enforcement is handling the physical animal control calls, and, and I'm using you just because you're here, so, um, the, the sheriff's department still needs four to hand, to handle that coverage. And, right, and then you three are covering the shelter during operational hours. And, and that would give you, um, the coverage to go in and take care of the dogs over the weekends, feed and water and stuff like that. And, um, would that mean someone would be there on Saturday and Sunday as well at the shelter?
Um, with the new shelter, my hopes would be to have staffing on like the Saturday at least, for people that can't come directly.
Gosh.
And maybe have like extended hours in the evening.
Okay.
Because we'll have a much more hospitable environment for people.
Okay, because I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around potentially, um, it could, because clearly, unless, if, if this went over to the sheriff's office, I, I guess you and your partner would have to make a decision. Do y'all want to apply for the sheriff's office to get certified police officers, so, um.
Well, she just said that a number of them are going to have to stay at the shelter anyway. They'll be doing the trips, taking their animals the way to go. So, that's basically what they're doing now.
Right, they're doing all of it now. The two of you, all these things, the two of you doing all of it now.
They're doing that.
Yeah, I do fifteen to twenty hours of networking from my house, on my own top, for the animals, because there's no.
So, if we brought in, would we get three more people and four more for this?
Well, it would be, if you counted her and her partner, it's two.
You'd really only need to take our part time kennel tech and make him full time.
Right, so they would have the three to cover the shelter.
Then we already have.
Which is all going to do is stop the attacks.
There's no guarantee.
Right, because you're going to have an elderly lady who's scared of a dog, she pulls up in her driveway. Not an aggressive dog, it's just a dog, but she's scared, and that is an emergency to her.
That's right.
But, because Stephanie has a call where there's someone's life in danger for, for real. And this is going to get put on.
All right, well, I guess that would, that opens up a different question then. Even though they're certified officers, if they're being hired to do animal control, regardless of what's going on with the sheriff's office, wouldn't that be their first priority if they were on duty for that?
Well, it depends on the call, you know, if it's a life threatening call, nah, like she said, uh, they would be, they'd respond to that. How many of those do we get, though, actually?
Right, right, I understand.
Well, animal control would be pretty much animal control.
Right, and see, that, that's one question that I, I felt like we, someone would ask, you know, if you're hiring these to cover the animal control calls, and you still got all of your other deputies on the road, why are you pulling from here to handle that? I mean, but, but when they're off duty, and y'all, whatever y'all do, y'all do, man, their coverage isn't there. You know, as, as long as the animal control calls getting, I guess what we need is the actual cost, maybe, for those four deputies, and then what it would cost to make the third party here go full time. Because, uh, Sheriff, I did a little bit of looking, trying to, trying to see what you guys might need in this case here. The county's vehicles aren't equipped to do what you guys need to do. Y'all need, y'all need interceptors.
Special, uh, vehicles for animal control.
That's right, but they also have to be interceptors in case of, you know, yeah, okay, all right, yeah, now.
Just standard police vehicle.
Right.
But that sounds like a specialty package, if you're trying to put the power into basically what's a animal paddy wagon.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but they also need to be able to, like you said, if they need to divert, they need to be able to do what they need to do.
They also need to be able to put traps in there.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so, I did some, there was, there is some stuff out there through VA, I'm sorry, it escaped me right now, with some of that funding. We could possibly get the funding for all four of them. I mean, at a, so, but at the end of the day, that's putting the cart in front of the horse, just.
Well, again, we don't have yet.
Right, right, and that's what I'm saying, we, this, this whole. Yeah, this whole conversation is looking at, basically, the capital expense moving forward before we get there, because clearly, we're going to have more expense at the shelter for staff. And what is that going to do? Because once the expectations are set and them doors open, people don't want to do as hours to change. You know, and then, there again, there's something else should be getting beat up for. But I guess, uh, Ms. Walters is, um, if, if it was a transition over that, is, is that something you feel more comfortable with? As, as far as like, if you need search warrant and stuff like that?
Well, so I will say, early on in Nada Way, we had a lot of struggles with animal control. It has been great under Sheila. Like, I have not had issues. We work really well together. We have a system down, the law is good.
And we're doing the same thing, like I said, we backing up, we going to calls, a lot of times, we have the calls first. And then we call them. At some calls, we'll go animal, actually, animal calls now, we'll go to run the dog bag in the pen.
Um, there are things that sworn law enforcement can do that Sheila cannot do, which would include taking them in felony warrants, which would be the ones we're involved in right now, because we don't have the staff to do the misdemeanor. So, that thing, that, that doesn't impact us as much right now. Um, serving search warrants is going to have to be law enforcement, anyone, a citizen can go over a quest to search warrant from a magistrate. Realistically, that doesn't happen, but you don't have to be sworn law enforcement to request it. But I don't know what training they have on. Um, I will say, I think the trend is very much moving towards, um, having animal control under the sheriff's office, so they have all of those sworn powers. But I would see that as, that's their dedicated role, and that they're pulled away as needed for emergencies, with a dedicated role.
Yeah.
I see that as the trend. I see eventually Nada Way going there, but not because I've ever had issues with Sheila.
Yeah.
Our, our animal control has very much gotten better under Sheila. Um, I still think that that is the direction the county probably does eventually need to go, is having sworn law enforcement officers under the sheriff, dedicated to animal control. But I mean, there are some duties right now that animal control is doing, that the officers share, that do. The animal seizures by law, it's animal control, sworn law enforcement. So, if an officer sees that an animal is in dire need of being seized for their health, the officer has a duty already.
Yeah, and we've had that happen on a couple of occasions with some warrants being served, even by state police. But they've said, this situation doesn't look right, and they've called in Sheila.
Yeah, so, and, and I guess too, other thing is, um, like I said, it, it's a lot of planning that has to go in. That's why I figured sooner the better, because what, what is the shelter's needs? And then, let's, let, all right, let's just pretend for a second, now I'm making no assumptions. Let's say he's like, you know what, I want to be the shelter manager, I don't want to be out on the road anymore. All right, you see what I'm saying? So, any of those needs can change, but at the same time, she might say, well, you know what, I like to be a police officer, and do that before I retire. So, um, I, I, I think that's really, the, the goal is to say, okay, where, where do we tend to be trending? Um, how successful is some of those? Because I know, I believe Dinwiddie is doing, I think Chesterfield is doing that as well.
Dinwiddie, I'm not sure if they're actually like, they don't really like, what, energy like.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it's under the sheriff, though. I don't, I don't know that they're doing the cross, are you talking about, I think they're sworn animal control under the sheriff's office. So, um, but, but I could be wrong, I talked to a lot of people about a lot of different things right now, but if that's inaccurate, I apologize. But, so, that, that's just kind of what's my feeling, guys. Where, where, where should we be looking at going? Because there's more to this than just any accusations in the street, this part of this capital finance and moving forward. So, that, that's.
I think we need to drill down and get some pretty good cost estimates, that would be related to it first.
Yeah, absolutely.
And once the shelter is built, then, of course, you would need more help, so, then we could visit that again during that time.
Because I know the sheriff's office just explained, y'all, y'all just got a couple more, um, school resource officers, is that right?
Got the last one this month, what, the last one this month, so we have one in every school, August first.
Well, I got no problem with more officers on the street. I have no problem with that at all, love it. We, we need all the help we can get right now at this day and time. So, does anybody have any questions, anything to move forward, or just?
Could, could I ask one of Sheila? So, I know on the, the list that I got from Mr. Anzavina, one of the things was a volunteer program for the animal shelter. And I just said, well, look, given our current animal shelter, that's not the place for volunteers. Let's just put that on the back burner until we get into a new shelter. Do the volunteers that have expressed an interest about being volunteers and working, do they know what the limitations are? Do they know that they can't touch this animal, touch that anywhere?
Probably have top people on the list.
Okay, all right.
Because that taking means I know there's more than that. We didn't like going to.
So, there might be a little bit of an education that we have to do on recruiting volunteers that, okay, you're not going to get to touch every dog, or, you know, play with every dog, you know, that there's something, you've got these restrictions on because of, of the staff.
I'm assuming you would, would understand what liabilities there would be for the county to put in place.
And there's, yes, there's going to be liabilities, even if you sign a liability waiver.
Yeah.
That's the reason why I was asking about staff. I'd much rather pay the staff than have to worry about a lawsuit. You know, I mean, granted, that is, is with the best intentions, but. Well, you go.
So, basically, action items and start costing out four positions and equipment, uh, relative to, what do we cost? With a dedicated deputy, you know, or, excuse me, four dedicated deputies that would primarily be, uh, for animal control. And you're looking at twenty-four coverage, twenty-four hour coverage?
Yeah.
Okay.
But Sheriff, when you said, uh, probably start with two and maybe use two of what you got, if, if you went that route, what is the timeframe of getting you up to four? Because I, I don't want you.
I would probably go the next budget, the first budget cycle, the next budget cycle, I want the other two.
All right.
Just take that much time to get folks.
I got you. Okay, so, if the shi, once the shelter is, is, is say it's built and we, we have decided on what, uh, we're going to do with staff, if we decide that we can start with two, but in the following year, we need to budget for two additional. Okay, so that gives, that gives us a starting point to, to get some figures, I mean, it's.
And then plus that first, once the shelter is established, you got to figure out protocol, how that is going to work, you know, it's going to be, how we're going to do that.
Yeah, you probably need a salad board on that.
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, all right, all right, we got, hey, I, I keep saying.
Mr. Chairman, I got to reiterate one thing. I think Sheila's in the nation to take a ride along. Uh, it's great. I've never done a ride along with Sheila, but I did it when I was down in Greensville. Uh, we saw animal control in Greensville, and it's not a fun day. So, if you do the ride, if you do the ride along, be prepared, because unfortunately, you see some pretty sad stuff.
I've seen it when I'm doing the, this is animal stuff, it's just, they're not companion animals, but it's all sad at times. But, well, guys, y'all have a good night. All right, well. Really appreciate it. We, we appreciate y'all having to have directions.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank y'all.
Proposed agenda for next week, and I'm already going to ask you to take one item off, and that's under the special presentation.
Under C.
Well, C is approval minutes, and then we, um, we just had a special presentation, because it's a little out of order. But take off number two, please, the line of duty death resolution. We have been approached about doing a recognition for a lot of duty death. Unfortunately, uh, there was a lot of duty death at, uh, at Fast C. The, uh, this weekend, it's the memorial service, and folks are kind of focused on getting ready for that. So, we haven't been able to get, uh, an ample amount of information to do a justifiable nice, uh, resolution. And we still need to coordinate with the family. Those are our contacts, and with the rescue squad. So, we'd like to take an opportunity to push that back for a month.
I'd like to add some more to, to more people to, uh, resolution.
Okay.
Jim Wiley, Lee Johnson.
All right, can we push those out to, um, since we're just getting it tonight, can we push those out to September as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Lee Johnson and First Lally.
Jim Wiley.
Jim Wiley.
Mr. Vaughn, I'll get with you, just a point of contact. I already have one on, uh, Mr. Bison. Uh, and the family there has asked that we push that one out, uh, because they want, they're still collecting information. Three, unfortunately, four public. Uh, three, unfortunately, four public hearings, special exception, that's gonna be for duplex, school surplus property, uh, conveying that out.
Um, Mr. Costin, under the public hearings for surplus property, have, have we gotten the, um, um, the signed documentation that we need from the school to surplus that to Blackstone?
We will have that Monday.
Okay.
We'll have it Monday. So, um, that signature is, uh, it's being obtained. And all I have to do, because the way it's been set up by council outside, we'll get it recorded Monday.
Okay.
So, by, certainly by Thursday, uh, Thursday night.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, you're right, certainly by Wednesday night, thank you. Uh, Wednesday night, uh, Thursdays.
Yes.
Certainly by, uh, Wednesday night, we'll have it recorded. You have the crew, boundary line adjustment, Burkeville, boundary line adjustment, standard reports, constitutional officer standard reports, uh, animal shelter update. The reimbursement resolution, that's, uh, speaks to, that's one of the items that, uh, you've been asking about that report earlier, that's one of their items, one of their action items.
Oh, okay, true, reimbursement resolution.
I've got some, uh, information for you on metal detecting. To address the gentleman's inquiry, uh, and then I'm looking at being able to provide at least a verbal report on Prince Edward Boundary Line Wednesday night.
Yeah, cause we'll have that...
On Tuesday, five o'clock. And then you have, uh, consent items, uh, correspondence is my report. And your closed session items, I eliminated one. I, I eliminated A, which was about, uh, not filed, but potential litigation.
Okay, and the, on the closed meeting, the, uh, is that the same code that we're going into closed session for tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's on there as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All members, do y'all see anything that needs to be updated, amended, or added?
I think it's time.
Of course, y'all know, we, if, if something comes up, we always have the option to amend the agenda before proof. You see anything, Mr. Vaughn?
I think we have set them out, if we, if we have told them.
It's, uh, it's, uh, the set amount that we, we give is tied to what's allowed in state code. In, uh, this particular case, the, the seven fifty is for calf, and the twenty dollars is for two thou.
And Mr. Moore's, the gentleman I was talking about, the Sheila that was in the newspaper a few weeks ago, where the, where the dogs killed his calf. I mean, yeah, I don't know, I don't see anything, Mr. Costin. Y'all don't see anything, but like I said, we can always add an item before the approval of the agenda, if that's all you have. Okay, all right, so, um, you got any comments, Mr. Costin?
Yes, sir. If you have any questions, y'all have them.
Mr. Vaughn, anything? Ms. Simmons, did you have anything? Ms. Shepherdon? Can I get a second to adjourn there?
Second.
Oh, my favorite, stand up. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all, good luck.
Very informative.